All right, I'm getting for the light to come on.
Things are gonna be pretty simple, so I'm just gonna make sure back here it's regular. I'll get to you.
Okay, we are on air, so welcome to the City of Norman City Council Business and Community Affairs Committee meeting of Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. We have one item on the agenda, and that is a presentation from Dr. Gabriel Byrd regarding the Norman Flag Project. So, welcome, Dr. Byrd.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Do I, is there a remote for this, or do I just click on it? Do we know?
Click on it.
Click on it, okay.
I am unsure.
So, a lot of you have heard this before, some of you haven't, so we're giving the full refresher. My name is Gabriel Byrd, I'm a dentist here in Norman, I was born and raised here, and I recently noticed a bit of a flaw in some, well, in our flag. So I've been yammering on about this for a few years, about why we need to redesign it, and I'd like to tell you about it today, because a lot of people say, "Well, why a new flag?" And, glad you asked. But first, I do have some questions for you. Now, I know in this room, most everybody here does know that we do have a flag, is that correct, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know what it looks like?
Yes.
So, go ask a few people here in the next few weeks, and most people won't know, won't know that we have a flag, but when you show it to them, then they recognize it, because we see it all the time. So, our flag design, this first came to my attention when I listened to a really great podcast about this, and it was about the Joint Commission on Vexilological Studies. Vexilology is the study of flags, and the North American Vexilological Association got together with their European counterpart to study what makes a successful flag. Now, the study of vexilology isn't so much about the aesthetics of a flag, but it's about the significance, the history that goes into it. And that's where you get really good-looking flags, but you start with the culture that they represent, and the way that cultures embody a flag and use a flag. They studied which flags historically had been the most successful, and they narrowed down to five principles of flag design that many of these designs had in common. Their whole report is on their website, it's a fantastic read. The, you guys are gonna have to laugh at more of my jokes while we're...
I know you're passionate, I wasn't sure if that...
So, this is our flag, we all see it on our, on our bill every month, and we see it on the side of the city trucks, and we see it on the street signs. And it's, it's not a horrible design, it just does not function very well as a flag. So if we compare it to those five principles of flag design set forth by NAVA and the Joint Commission, these are their guidelines. First is to keep it simple, and we missed the mark on that one, it's a little complicated. And they mean so simple that a small child can draw it from memory. For example, my sweet daughter, who was about to turn nine, back when she was six years old, and I started really thinking about this, I asked her to draw, and we know what this is, right? The stars and bars, and I think she did a pretty good job of it. And that's the level of simplicity that we're after. The next, use meaningful symbolism. And our flag, we've got the sun on the horizon looking into the future, we've got the gear of industry, we've got a feather for our native cultures, we've got the lightning bolt for energy, and I like to think that we predicted back then we would all be Thunder fans by now. And the musical note for the arts, wheat stalk for agriculture, and pencil for, for education. So these are definitely meaningful to us, but they're not exactly symbolically represented. If we think about the United States flag again, each star represents a state, and each stripe represents one of the first 13 colonies, that's what we're talking about with symbolism. So, two to three basic colors, we nailed that one. But I use this point to mention that you can have a successful black, flag and break one or two of these rules at a time. So for example, here's a pop quiz, does anybody know it's a country, what country's flag this is?
Brazil.
That's not a bad guess, it is South Africa, correct? And they have a lot of colors on there, but it's a wonderful flag, because they follow all of the other principles very well. No lettering or seals, and we wrote our name on ours. So, harkening back to the stars and bars, we all know this is America, and you don't need to write "United States of America" on it to know that. And that's when, once a flag's really been identified with by a culture, the words are no longer necessary. And, we want to be distinctive or be related, and our flag certainly is distinctive, I mean, that one is up for debate. I think the, the things that we are incorporating on our flag are wonderful, meaningful things that, that we can all agree are important to our town. The, the execution is just not, and, and I don't think this is a bad-looking bit of graphics design as a whole, it just does not function very well as a flag. So, this is not one of NAVA's recommendations, but something that, as I've been researching this, has come up more and more often, which should be point number six, is that a good flag is also not copyrighted. Ours is, which limits its use. So if somebody wanted to go put this on a shirt, or wanted to utilize this for an event, they can't. So, not copyrighted, which is also why, I can't say it enough, I don't hate this design, it's just not a good flag, and part of our proposal is that this design will remain as our city seal. Because plenty of government agencies have their own seal, it exists independently of the flag, and then the flag really can be a symbol for the people of that community. And that's what we're after. Back to our artistic study we did with my six-year-old, I asked her to take a swing at our flag from memory, and that's what she came up with, which wasn't bad. And since I've stared at this flag so much, I went ahead and tried it myself from memory and got, you know, close-ish, but it just, I think speaks to how overcomplicated the flag actually is. More of the things you're looking for, well-designed flags versus poorly-designed flags, you need to be able to recognize them from across the room when they're on a lapel pin, you need to be able to recognize them from a distance, they need to be recognizable when they're in the wind or when they're at rest, that's another thing about our flag that works against it, since we are banner style, when it is a beautiful day in Norman, and it's just in that beautiful fall breeze, it's sideways. Easy to see in reverse, that's where lettering gets complicated, because from the backside it's backwards, or you have to make more expensive flags that have two laminate layers. And the distinctive part is, they're not easily confused with other flags. On our poor, the poor design example side, we have many representations of what's known in vexilological circles as the SOB, which is the Seal on Blue, which is what a lot of places do, they just pick a blue field and stick the seal on it, and it doesn't make for a great flag, or it doesn't set it apart from other flags very well. So now that we're all experts in flag design, the, the next quiz of the day, which one of these is a good flag and which is a bad flag?
The Chicago flag is a bad one.
The bottom is good.
Right? We didn't even need to write "Chicago" on that one. The Chicago flag is, is a bit of the darling of the vexilological world, we love it, and we're gonna talk a little more about that. The Milwaukee flag, again, I'll say, would, not a bad poster, right? But not a great flag. And fun fact, Milwaukee redesigned their flag recently, I got to talk with the guy who led this charge, and this is what they came up with, it's, I think, is much nicer, it works a lot better for what a flag should do. The flag of Chicago, meaningful symbolism, right? So the two blue stripes are bodies of water around the city, the three white stripes are regions of the city, each of those stars represents an event or a principle that's important to that city. I didn't mention earlier, but another thing that's not necessary but nice to have is amendability of a flag. This flag originally just had three stars across the middle, later they added one. Another famous amendable flag is the United States flag, we add a star every time we add a state, but that's not required. When you get down into those stars, each point on each star represents another smaller facet of the overall, what that star represents. What's so cool about this, if you think about, if you don't know anything about the city of Chicago, and you know somebody who knows this flag, and you can go have coffee with them, or beer, and they can walk you through their flag, and by the time they're done, they will have told you the story of their city. That, I think, is remarkable. That's why we love this flag in the hobby world. They love the flag in Chicago, too. Part of it not being copyrighted is people use it like crazy. This, this is a bicycle club that stylized it, this was some Bulls fans, this one's, one of my favorites, it was a music festival that stylized the flags for some of the things they were doing.
Cool.
T-shirts, cellphone cases, and everybody is free to use it however they want, because there's no copyright on it. This is their city seal, and that's what shows up on the letterhead and on your utility bill each month, which is a great seal. But that's, part of that, when I first started this, and I thought, "Well, our flag's not great," the more I learned about this copyright thing, and the seal versus flag, that is, it's a bigger deal than I realized, but it's an important part of this. Not too long ago, my dear wife and I were traveling to the northeast coast to see some of her family, and our layover in Chicago got delayed, so we were walking around the airport, and I just, you see this flag everywhere. So gift shops, there was a restaurant that's used it, t-shirts, mugs, Yeti cups. Our delay turned into an overnight stay in Chicago, so we went to go see The Bean, it's a fantastic piece of public art, which, does anybody know The Bean's real name? Cloud Gate. That we all know the name. We were driving to The Bean, and I noticed on the ironwork on the overpass, they've incorporated their, the stars and their stripes of their flag, and it's just fantastic. The first responders all have patches of that flag on their uniforms, I didn't think it would be tasteful to include a picture, but it is known that first responders in Chicago, whenever they pass away, they have the option of having the Chicago flag laying over their casket, and a lot of them take that option. So, you were talking about a city that loves and identifies themselves by this flag, not by the seal of the city. Guess where this company is based? Chicago. So, local industry, you, you take that copyright off of this, you have a cultural identity behind it, and you have things like this. The Denim Company, these guys are wonderful, I, if you see my cart, I did buy a pair of jeans from them, and I love it. The, let's see, I had another point about these guys, but I'll bring it up if I remember Washington DC, also a popular flag in vexilological circles, but you can see, hits all of the principles, and if you walk around Washington DC, you see it on storefronts, you see it on t-shirts. They, a lot of their city agencies have included it in their individual seal, but again, it's a motif that shows up in there, it doesn't try to double as...
But it also has historical significance in that it's part of the Washington family crest.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that. I haven't read this, about this one as much in Chicago.
Having lived in there for 15 years, it does, it is, that's part of where it came from.
Thank you. I'll, I'll look, I'll read more about that. We all know Tulsa recently redesigned their flag, and it's a gorgeous design, and I saw this not too long ago, so it's already making its way out into...
Hanson Brothers had beer?
Hmm?
I'm sorry, I got off track with the Hanson Brothers beer there on the left. Mops.
Just imagine a beautiful Norman flag.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
But so this thing, it works, if you get a killer design, it works pretty quickly, that people will start adopting it. I don't know if you know much about the story of the Tulsa flag, but when they finally voted this, it hit some pushback, and before it was officially adopted by the city, about a year after they voted, or they chose the design after doing the votes and things, people were already flying this flag all over this Tulsa before it was officially adopted, so it kind of won before it had to be voted in. That, actually, part of that story brings me to why, part of our plan, because I spoke with these guys, too, was to involve the city council early and often, because they, they did all independent, all independent, all independent, and then huge response, people loved it, but then there was an outcry at the last minute to say, "Why should we change our flag? This is terrible," and, you know how those city council meetings can go?
No. What are you talking about?
Our plan is to actually have two committee members that are on council as advisory committee members, that they can be in on the meetings, they can be in on the process, we're gonna be coming to council meetings regularly to give you guys updates. The, it's been asked a few times, when we do go to final vote, we're not gonna be including an option to retain the current flag because of the copyright issue with it, so there's not gonna be an option to keep it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if we don't copyright it, how do we keep somebody else from copywriting it, and then not allowing us to use it?
That's a good question. I don't know. But I will, I will...
I feel like it may be like an intellectual property rights that's free to use, okay, 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 go.
It's, when you get copyrighted, it can't be confused or comparable to other things that already exist, otherwise it doesn't get, it's not independent, it's not an individual thing. So I think if they tried to do this, it'd be like, eh, this is already used, and it would be confused with this. Am I right, Catherine?
I think so.
That's for the similar one, and then also if it's, you can't copyright someone else's product. So you're, the artist, like I'm at, we would be hiring an artist, but it's for the city, so you can't go and say, "Oh, I like that poem, I wrote it."
I shall copyright.
Okay, cool, good answer. Okay, cool, I just was thinking that.
Yeah, so we're not actually gonna hire an artist, we're gonna open those to submissions, but they will, whoever gets it will get the credit for it, so, it's a good question, thank you. A good answer, thank you. So how are we planning on doing this? We've already got sort of permission to make this ad hoc committee, we're gonna include the two members, I've spoken with council member, yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
On that note, you do need to put a disclaimer that they can't make, whoever wins cannot take copyright on it.
For the record, that was council member Petron.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm, actually, the apology was...
We got it. We're, we're live streaming as well, so it shouldn't be that big of a deal.
So I'm gonna be picking your brain a lot through this process. So the, the committee with the, the council involvement, we're gonna open it to public submissions, Day Creative has been very gracious in helping us come up with our website, so we can get that out there. Open submissions, anybody can, they're gonna be encouraged to follow a three-to-five ratio rectangle and submit with an artist statement to explain their symbolism and their thinking behind it. The committee that we're currently assembling is going to narrow this down to a range of finalists, five to 10, we'll put that up for vote, and instead of a yes/no, you get to just rank each flag, one to 10, how much you like it. This is the advice from the folks that did the Milwaukee flag, it helps, the people that are gonna campaign for "Just do mine, don't do that," it's gonna disappear a little bit when people can score each flag as opposed to voting on each flag.
So it's scored and not ranked? Because it would seem that you could still do, they're all nines, and it wouldn't help much, instead of, "This is my number one preference, this is my number two," like ranked voting for people?
Their advice was to say, "Score this one on us, scale from one to 10," instead of ranking one, two, three, four, five, and that way, some people are gonna have two they love, and they can rank them both tens, and they're gonna have one or two they kind of like, and they'll rank them sevens. With, with Milwaukee, with, there's another one that did a redesign, and I, the name of that city is escaping me now, the consensus was that that is the best way to do it, to get the most fair response, because what'll happen is, you'll have people that campaign for one, or try to get one pushed up or one pushed down, but when you have several thousand people vote, they'll all start emerging to a number, and a very natural ranking of what the people at large like. And it gives people a chance to weigh in on multiple design, you don't have to just choose one. And, so whichever one gets the highest score there, Tulsa had a bit of a problem with theirs, too, because they required...
Councilmember Scanlon.
Are we taking this vote online?
We're gonna do it online. I'm gonna make it a paper option, though, where if people wanna...
Have you run it in the newspaper?
Rank them and mail them to me, they'll be able to. Same with the submissions, the submissions are gonna be online, but we're gonna have a paper option for people if they wanna hand draw. And we've got some graphics designers that have agreed to help, that if somebody doesn't have access to the software and wants to hand draw something, that we'll have it professionally rendered out into the, the idea that they have. So if they make it to the finals, we'll, we'll kind of work with all of those to get the, all the designs as level as we can.
Mayor Clark?
We had previously talked about involving Norman Public Schools.
Yes.
So have, would the students have access to these graphic designers?
The finalists will have access to the graphics designer, so that's where, we know we're gonna get some hand-drawn submissions, and we're going to, the, the submissions don't necessarily have to be this polished product. If somebody just has an idea with zero graphics design, and they wanna convey that, write an artist statement explaining how they want it to look, or the idea here or there, that, the committee's gonna take all of those things into account. And, and then if they, they make the finals based on that, the, before it's presented for voting, they'll all be polished over, and then approved of by the submitting artist.
Well, and I've spoken to the superintendent, Dr. Millarino, and he seemed completely open to, and having the schools involved in it.
Great.
I would just ask that you involve all schools, not just Norman Public Schools, because we have several private schools, Little Axe, and then any student that does participate, I think it'd be awesome to send them some sort of certificate for participation, just to really kind of encourage engaging in stuff like this.
Yeah, that's, I love it. Yeah, and we'll reach out to CCS and reach out to the private schools. And so, which, we're gonna spread the word through the schools, I've spoken with the principals when they got together, and they're gonna help get it to each individual school. So definitely getting the word out, but it will be, anybody can submit, too, so if, if they're at a school that doesn't have access to it.
Mayor Clark? Does it have to be a Norman resident to submit?
It does not.
Okay.
Anybody can. The, so, public scoring, highest score gets presented to city council, that's the other thing with the scoring, was Tulsa required a 50% or more, but they had three flag designs, so initially, they all were like a third, a third, a third, so they had to do a runoff between the last two, and by the time it was done, everybody was sick of this project, so, that's where the scoring has been recommended several times over, as I've talked to people that have gone down this road. Fundraising, crowdfunding, we don't seem to need much. So far, I've been paying for everything we need to pay for, and it's, it's not been all that hard. Like I said, Day Creative's gonna donate some of their time and resources, which is very highly appreciated. And we're gonna come up with some level of an award and recognition for the winning, winning vote, or winning design. And then, yeah, that, the end of all that, the current flag will remain.
I don't know how it works.
I'm sorry.
You just talk.
Oh, I just talked, I'm so sorry, Dr. Petron. My question is, what are we gonna use the flag for? Obviously, we'll fly a flag out here, but is it not gonna be on those city vehicles really, right? It just be for cultural...
Cultural, yeah.
Okay.
So, and that's the thing, and that's part of it, is we don't wanna cause expense for re-decaling the city vehicles, we don't wanna have to redesign or...
Put it on the buses. We could put it on the buses.
Now, if we do later decide we wanna put it on these things, I think that's a great idea. You know, for example, Chicago, that flag is not their seal, but it's on the side of their police cars, and it's on the side of a lot of things.
Yeah.
I do not want to propose anything that will cause any sort of budgetary constraint to install that infrastructure.
That's appreciated.
So the first goal is for it to be adopted culturally, and then those things typically will organically make their way into those. When it's time to redesign, it's time to redo.
Mayor Clark, did you have?
I did. We used to have a flag-type thing framed and hung up out here, but we don't anymore, and so I think when we get a final product, it'd be neat to frame it and give the artist some recognition, and put the artist statement right there, and we conveniently have a space for it here at City Hall now.
I love it, love it, love it.
Love it, too. Good job.
Okay. Oh, so even after all this, you might still be asking, "Why?"
That gets me, sure.
"Why Norman, why our flag?" And it, it has to do, and I always choose my words very carefully with this, because I am an alumni of OU, I've got a couple of degrees from them, and I, again, born and raised here, I love our university, I don't wanna decry our relationship as a city with our university, but we do live in the shadow of the University of Oklahoma. Outside of Norman, we are mainly known as the home of the University of Oklahoma. And it's not until you get the point of view on this town that a lot of us who live here get when we're here, of how remarkable our city actually is on its own merit. But if we did have a single unifying cultural identifying flag, it's this one. And I think if we get our own city flag, we can definitely, and we're not gonna outshine the University of Oklahoma, but it does a little more for us to carve out our identity as a city outside of just the home of the university. This is a beautiful flag, though, that follows all five principles of design, and it looks good in the wind and at rest.
Everyone being quiet is copyrighted.
It's number six, right?
It is.
And when it's time to unveil this whole process, I think it would be helpful to work with, and I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Pyle on if it's appropriate, but using our, our video guide to do a quick, if, "Are you considering making a submission? Here's what we're looking for," and cover, you know, just make it a helpful how-to.
Oh, yeah.
Like a quick, even one-minute video.
Absolutely.
I think if we don't provide some guidance on what we're looking for, we may get some interesting stuff.
Councilmember Petron.
Thank you. On a follow-up to that, it would be good if there was one that was geared toward the kids, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and we're working on generating that content and getting it together, any help I can get from the city. I also do not want to drain any funds and resources from the city, so anything, if we need to supplement the expense of the video, videographer's time, I'd like to arrange for that if we can.
Mr. City Manager.
And, and doctor, you may know, but it would have to be historically long before you were a studier of vexilology. If I'm not mistaken, years and years ago, the, when recycling first became a thing, the, the ad was a very simple stick figure over a trash can, it just said "Pitch in." And I think that was, that was done by an elementary school kid through this kind of a process, and I mean, it went nationwide for a decade, that symbol was on every recyclable can all over the United States. So, this will be a fascinating process, because from the, the simple vision of, you know, could be a fifth-grade kid that comes up with this thing that, you know, when real artists could help him, you know, clean it up and formalize it, could be really fantastic.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Timelines for all of this?
So, we're, I've been pushing the timeline back, because I went and had another kid, well, my, my wife had another kid. I was there the whole day, and I kept telling her, she was doing a great job. So we, we, he's almost one-year-old now, that's kind of why this got delayed after our initial push last year, and then Grady Carter, who's co-chairing this with me, went and got married, and, so, we're, we're getting the wheels back going. I wanted the submissions to be going on during the school year, so hopefully we'll get all this rolled out within the next few months, so that while kids are in school, we can get the word out to them. And then, if the dream really comes true, we will be adopting this pretty close to Flag Day next year.
June.
Or it's June, yeah.
Oh, good.
So that's the goal. I'm not promising that, though.
So, how do we help you? What do you need from us?
Right now, I just wanted to get the new members informed, we can get together on some of the ways we can help generate some of the content, to get the word out, would be great. We're also looking for a few more committee members, I've already gotten commitments from former mayor Bill Nations. Bianca Gordon with Bridges, yes, ma'am?
It's worth pointing out that former mayor Bill Nations was mayor when the logo was a, so, making sure we get that vision included and not stepping on toes and not ignoring that process.
When I, when I first started this, "You need to talk to Bill Nation, you need to talk to Bill..." Yeah, we got together, and, and fortunately, it ended in a lot of smiles and handshakes, and, yeah. And enough to where he's been willing to jump on board with our committee.
Great.
Bianca Gordon, who works for Bridges, I think many of us know her. Mrs. Loughlin, who was my Oklahoma history teacher when I went to West, and she's a fantastic wealth of Oklahoma history knowledge, so I'm excited about that. Jay Nicole Hatfield is a native artist, and if you're not familiar with her work, I would encourage you to go check her out, because it is fantastic. We do have, our goal is to have a senior from Norman High and Norman North. Charlotte Mencino is Norman High senior who has agreed to, to hop on board on the committee. We're looking for a senior from Norman North. That's still reaching out.
Okay. I think it was Lindsay Bellino?
Mm-hmm.
Did, I think she's Norman North.
I never heard back from her. I know.
All right, I'll check it out.
We're getting close.
She's Norman North.
And we're, we're wanting to make sure we have representatives of every culture, every age group, every group in town that we can, so, and we're looking for about three to five more members or so, I think after that it gets a little crowded. Councilmembers, Kate Bearman and Joe Carter have agreed to...
Mayor Clark?
How does an organization request a presentation like this from you?
Just give me a call.
Can we get that on the city's website or something?
Absolutely.
Sure. I've presented to a few of the local business organizations, I got to present to the Norman Public Schools principals, I love giving this presentation.
I'd like to have you at the student resident roundtable, once it is ready for submission.
I'd love to be there.
Can I make another suggestion for committee members? Can we reach out to Little X Schools?
Sure.
And maybe the tribes that are represented in the...
I'd love to, if you can give me some contacts, I'd love to talk to them and get them in.
I'll get with you afterwards, see what I have.
And we've, here's some resources, these are the report, a couple of podcasts and YouTube videos and articles that outline, again, successful flags, the what, the why. We've made a Facebook group, Norman Flag, and then we've got our website, and our email address, it's just the website's pretty bare bones right now, but that'll be where a lot of these submission voting happens.
How's the Facebook group going?
Yeah, we've got...
Pushback or anything?
Nope, no pushback. There were, you know, when the transcript ran, read, ran an article when we first started talking about this and doing it, and what I've, what's been nice is when you, a lot of the pushback and a lot of the questions, the first, there's actually a frequently asked questions section on the website, because the first thing people say is, well, how much is this going to cost the city? We've got all these other city problems we need to face, why are we spending our time doing this? And that's why we want it to be a citizen-driven thing, we don't want to deplete the city's resources to make this happen. So this can exist while we address things like senior citizen center and address stormwater, where, so it's not going to cost the city anything. The other one is, why change our flag? I think that's what mainly I've been trying to answer this whole, this whole time. Remember, there's another one that comes up a lot, but when you get a chance to explain the whats and whys, I've had high, high levels of, as people then understand and they get on board and they like it, so. I get to have anybody really dig their heels in and tell me I'm horrible for doing this.
Good, I didn't really ever notice our flag until you brought this up, the last time I saw your, or the first time I saw your presentation, I guess, and I was like, oh, our flag is kind of weird, isn't it? I mean, it's a good flag, or a good seal, like you said, but as far as a flag goes, it's indiscernible.
Yeah, for as many of us love our town, if it was a good flag design, I think it would be flying all over town already.
Yeah.
So...
Was there any questions, any additional questions?
I just have one last comment, based on, I think I shared it the first time we saw it, a year or so ago. You all know my hometown is Wichita, Kansas, and I don't, they didn't go through a process because they discovered a city flag, I still haven't gotten the story behind that, but historically, they had a flag, found it, and it's been the exact same response. And so I've been able to see it from the perspective of someone who lived there pre-flag, and whenever I go back, it's just shocking. I mean, it's such a great source of community pride, and that's why I'm wholeheartedly supporting this project.
It's like a grounding.
I mean, it's everything from actual flags, Wichita State has used it in their shirts, so I've seen that, Old Town, their version of Bricktown, the bar mats are the flag, I mean, it's koozies, bumper stickers, it's everywhere. So I'm excited to do something positive that won't cost us any money, increase citizen engagement, really, and that also creates an opportunity to talk about our legacy and what being a citizen in Norman means, and I'm excited about that.
I'm too.
From the science of vexillology, and even with councilmember Scanlon's military perspective, I am under the impression that when we make beach towels and t-shirts that are the American flag, that that's considered a no-no from the flag etiquette perspective.
From an etiquette perspective, that's right, but that doesn't stop it. Because of freedom of speech issue.
Etiquette is not a thing anymore.
From a city flag perspective, it almost seems to be part of the motivation, that we want it to be t-shirts and koozies and just, you know, and I'm thinking, you know, with the jean company, that, you know, it wouldn't be awesome if everything York-related coming out of Johnson Controls up here on the north side of town came with that flag on the box, stamped, kind of a, absolutely, kind of a thing. So it feels like there is a different etiquette level of acceptance for that kind of utilization of this flag as opposed to the Stars and Stripes.
There typically is, and if I, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm fuzzy on this, I know that there is a written flag code for the United States flag, which lays out the guidelines of how to display it, how to illuminate it, how not to make clothes out of it, or, so, that's something we could always consider doing, is writing a flag code for our flag. But I think the, usually on these levels, it's a little more casual, and most people use it well, and...
I have nothing else, if anybody, you have any questions? We only have one that it's been today.
We designed a, I'm Richard Solinsky, I conducted symphony downtown here. We have a symphony that was designed musically off of our Wichita logo. So when I talked to the mayor about this, we had a, you know, she said, oh, we're changing the flag, I thought, oh, we just wrote a symphony, it's on the wall here. So Libby Larson wrote, when we started symphony nine years ago, she took every element of that flag and made a musical motive, and then she wrote a 25-minute symphony.
Oh, wow.
But it's still going to be the logo, so, I think it might actually, people might take more notice of the logo if we have a new flag, to be honest with it.
What I'm hoping to see, I mean, this is, we've got, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven elements represented on here, so some sort of geometry that comes out to seven, or if we decide we want to add an eighth, you can make an eight-point star. There's lots of ways that we can still make what's on this flag relevant, and just, you know, symbolize it a little more effectively.
A second symphony.
I want it to be green. I want it to be green.
Councilmembers cannot submit flag designs.
I know people, though.
Nobody on the committee can submit.
I'll be influencing.
But yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you prefer that we get ahold of you, councilmembers get ahold of you at this email, or can, do you want to, after we go off air, give us a different way?
I'll do that, I'll give you my direct one. I check that one about every two or three days, but...
All right, well, thank you so much for your presentation, your hard work on this, I really, when I first heard it, I thought, now what? And now I'm like, I can't wait to see what it's going to be. I get really excited about it, so, thanks for staying so focused on it, you know?
Getting refocused.
Yeah, and refocused, well, I mean, you had a baby. But anyways, thank you so much, that was our only agenda item, so, do we have any miscellaneous comments, anything you want to talk about? Anybody? Nope?
I'm with you, I just think this is super cool.
Yeah, I think it's going to be fun and cool, and maybe a Team Norman moment where we can all be together on something.
I agree with you as well, that we lack that identity symbol that says, we're more than just OU, that we have something going on here that's really special.